We call this August Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Will everyone rise from home and prayer room?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. Lord, we thank you for those that who have joined us tonight for this meeting to see the business of the Pickens County School System. Lord, we thank you for the safe and successful first few days back in school. We hope that you will look after our students and staff throughout this school year, keep them safe, and guide them onto a path that they will be successful. Lord, give us more wisdom and guidance as we go forward to make the best decisions possible as you would see fit. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Section number four. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda to include additional field trips under action item number four and to add action item number nine, approval of guaranteed maximum pricing for Phase Two Pickens Junior High School?
I make the motion to amend the agenda with the items achieved as stated.
Motion by Ms. Finley, do her a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Section five, student recognition. Coach Parker's part.
Yeah. Good evening. Excited today to recognize two of our student athletes for state-level achievements. These happened over May and June, but you know, because some of them we can get a chance to recognize them. So first up, we've got Jake King. Jake was able to win the gold and the silver at the state-level Special Olympics this year in the swim, and you know, we're just so proud of him and just want to bring him up and put him in front of the board and give him a chance to tell him how proud we are. Come on up, Jake.
Good job, too. I'm so proud of you. Great job.
Can you come right here?
Stand right here, buddy. He's gonna take you. Come on up. Come on. I believe Jake won his fifty-meter gold right and hundred-meter silver, is that right? Did he get it right? Was that? Excellent job. Excellent job. The next athlete we want to recognize is Victor Lane. Come up here, Victor, and I'm gonna tell a little bit about what you did, because I'd explain this probably a little better. But Hines Award formed a group in Georgia over the last few years called Positive Athlete Group, and they go across the whole state and they pick out winners, for regional winners and state winners. So we've had a few regional winners every year, you know, for somebody to submit their community service or anything they've ever come in life, and then of course they include that they're talented in the sport, too. And so we've submitted probably four or five different people a year that have won their our little, our mountain area for this award, but this is the first time ever we've had somebody win at the state level. So Victor was our, was the state-level swim and dive male. I think fifty-four-hundred people applied for this, over fifty-four-hundred, in just the state of Georgia, were nominated by their coach, and they picked forty, twenty boys, twenty girls for the sports, and Victor's one of them. So when you think of one out of fifty-four-hundred, that's pretty good. So proud of Victor. He was, as far as his community work, was giving back for some food pantry things he does, and for, he's our most accomplished swimmer in the school's history. He's only had a swim team about four years, but he's, you know, he's far and away been our most accomplished swimmer, so he placed that in state meet this year and has been big in the community. So our state-level winner, Victor Lane. Thank you, everybody.
Wait, wait a second. I came out of the squat a little bit. I don't have, I have, I can relate.
All right, he's taller than you already standing down there. Congratulations to both these gentlemen, very proud of them and their families. We're gonna get on to our regular business. You're more than welcome to stay, but if you're here just for recognition, feel free to step out if you'd like.
It's been fun. Thank you.
Always fun.
Bye, Dad, thank you so much.
Superintendent reports, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First is our financial update. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. We'll review our general fund summary. Our FY '20 general fund revenue collected through the end of July is .78 percent. Just want to remind you that all property taxes, one month of TAVIT and certain other taxes are backed into the prior year, so you won't see a whole lot of that show up until September. That's why the number is very low at this point. Also, with our QBE, the same thing happens July and August. Most of that revenue goes back into the prior year to cover those non-12-month employees. You'll see these numbers start to perk up a little bit when we hit September, but all is, all is well. We're right where we need to be at this point. We have expended 5.26 percent of our tentatively approved budgeted expenditures, and keep in mind we have to stay under that one-twelfth from the prior year according to our spending resolution. So you'll see another spending resolution tonight until we have the digest and we can present a final budget for approval and get that military approved, we will continue to do those spending resolutions. As we go to the SPOLOSH report, our SPOLOSH revenue for the month of July was $433,510.38. Interest earned was $4,469.78. Our expenditures totaled $1,984,583.78, and that brings our month-end SPOLOSH balance at the end of July to $8,947,077.3. Remember when I promised y'all y'all'd see some of that money coming down? Now we're working on it. Do y'all have any questions on the general fund and SPOLOSH report at this point? As always, we have no debt, we'd like to keep it that way. The Department of Audits, we have gone into Phase Two of the review, and I have not been notified if it has gone to Phase Three review, but it could have already, so we should expect to hear a time be set for an exit interview with them in the next, I'm hoping, three to four weeks. So as soon as we hear from that, then of course the report would come out to y'all a little later than that. So we'll keep y'all updated on what's going on with audit, but so far, so good, so. And then Martha, she always, we always let you see where we are in the collection process. Our twelve-month average is $439,229.18. So we're hanging in there, had a little dip this month, but we're gonna keep those hopes high. That is still more than we use as our average to predict our and to plan with our SPOLOSH projects, so we're in a very comfortable position at this point. The other report that's out here, once every quarter, at the end of each quarter the following month, we present the school activities report. This is, and this is for the entire year for FY '19. I just, when I start the quarter, I just let you see the whole year, so we'll start over in FY '20, but this is the final FY '19 school activities report by school. As you can see with each quarter, you see the beginning balance, the total receipts for that quarter, the total dispersments for that quarter, and the year or quarter, year or quarter end totals. So that's just to show you, we're required to report this once every three months, so this is just for your review. If you have any questions, you can always get in touch with me or the principal and ask any questions you would like. And if you have any questions at this point.
Good, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Raises up next, our operations and construction, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. For everybody that doesn't realize, the school is back in. It was a hectic summer. I'm proud to report as the board went and toured Phase One, if the junior high is complete and the Dover building is complete, other than some punchless items, which was an amazing undertaking. We're excited to move in when you guys approve tonight the GMP into Phase Two at the junior high. But maintenance has done a tremendous job of keeping up with this process, getting all the furniture moved, getting all the minor repairs taken care of. We're not completely done with all the minor repairs, but those will be caught up with as we move forward, and Stacy's proud to report that we are, we are in a good place. I know that there were a lot of people that were concerned, a lot of rumors going around about delays to the start of the school year, and we made it, and it was because of our people. We have really good people, and even Stacy was talking to me a couple of days ago about how patient the principals and staff, all the school employees have been during this process, and with parents as we go through the process of construction down at the high school. There's, there's been some changes with the way we pick up and drop off, and everybody's been extremely patient with that process, very complimentary, so we've got a tremendous maintenance staff. Another staff that we have that is tremendous is transportation. It is amazing what those people are able to do every year, especially at the beginning of the year. It is a major undertaking, a lot of buses, a lot of people, a lot of moving parts. And speaking of buses, we started the year with six new buses. The fleet is in the best shape it's ever been. Thanks to people like Stacy, we added one sped, five regular buses, and if you get an opportunity to see the fleet, it is, it's something to behold. It looks, it looks really good. Of course, there were some, there were some bumps with the beginning of the school year. There were some issues with getting the right kids on the right buses and those types of things, but all of that stuff's being worked out, and the drop-off time dropped by about thirty-five, forty minutes just from first day to second day yesterday. So already getting it down to a, a number that kind of matched with our last year again. So transportation's doing an awesome job. I wanted to go ahead, our SROs, a little bit of moving around with our SROs, but I wanted all of you guys and, and the public to be familiar with those names. They do a tremendous job for us in our schools. We're very likely to have them, we're very likely to have the relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Department. And this year, PHS in Dover, we're gonna have Officers Padgett and Roach. They do a tremendous job down there. The junior high is gonna have Officer Thompson. The middle school's gonna have Officer Croft. Harmony Elementary's gonna have Officer Key. Hill City's gonna have Officer England, and Tate will have Officer Hopkins. So if you see those, those individuals at any, any time, give them a thank you for what they do for us, because they provide an invaluable service. It'd be hard to do it without. And so that concludes my maintenance, transportation, operations report.
Awesome. Next, let's go into advanced ed. We've got our final thing with advanced ed, and we've got our certificates that we're about to get out tonight on our accreditation with advanced ed. So the first one's Harmony Elementary. Pickens High School. And I find it real interesting, we got one for Pickens County Board of Education.
Keep it a ball.
And the Pickens County School District. Thank you all. Well, hold on. Credit for another five years. You know, I think one of the hardest things to do in any school year is to get an accurate number in the very beginning of actually who's there, who's no-shows, who's absences, but we're really working hard on that. Mr. Young has our latest enrollment numbers he'll share with us.
All right, I'll just break them down by school and then give you guys a total, and these numbers continue to firm up, but at Harmony Elementary School, we are looking at a total enrollment at this point of 569 students with eighteen no-shows at this point and six absences for the day, which brings their present for the day to 545. At Hill City Elementary School, we have a enrollment of 595. We had nineteen, or we have nineteen no-shows, we have eight absences today, which brings a total for the day of students in the building to 568. Jasper Middle School, we are looking at enrollment number of 678 with nine no-shows, with five absent for the day, with total number of students in the building at 664. The high school's a little different animal, they do attendance by period, so each student can miss four a day, so we just have totals for them, otherwise it would be thousands and would be very confusing. But the total enrollment for the high school is 1391. In the junior high, we've got a total enrollment of 725, we've got twelve no-shows, we had twelve absences, so that puts us at 701. Tate Elementary, 477 enrolled, thirteen no-shows, one absent. That's awesome. And that puts us at a total of 463. So our grand totals enrolled as of this point in time is 4,435 students, seventy-one no-shows, thirty-two absences for the day. We actually had in the buildings today 4,332 students. That concludes that report. Dr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Bring us down to section six, action items. First action item is approval of personnel. Two personnel action reports, I'm gonna join them together if that's okay with the board, so can I have a motion to approve both personnel action reports as presented?
I make the, we approve both personnel action reports as presented.
Motion by Ms. Finley, do her a second.
A second.
Second by Ms. Youngblood, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item number two, approval of spending resolution for September 2019. Ms. Smith already talked about this and it's become kind of routine last couple of months. Any questions? Do you hear a motion to approve spending resolution for September?
I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do her a second.
A second.
Second by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Approval of the CTAE budget for 2019-2020, I believe. Our CTAE director is here tonight and is willing to make a brief presentation. So Ken Basin, CTAE director, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, every year, we are required by the state, because we receive funding, to bring to you our budget. Once it's been approved through you, then I get to go about distributing that money and being able to make purchases. I'm gonna go as quickly as I possibly can. If there's a question that you have, please let me know. I'll stop and answer whatever questions that you have, but seekers, if you're ready. Okay? So this is our, all right, we're ready. We have our five-year Perkins Local Plan, which is just like it says, every five years that gets renewed. We are currently working on our Pickens Four, but Pickens Five has been approved by the, by the governor and by the president, and so next year, we will be under Perkins Five. But for this year, we're operating under Perkins Four. And basically what Perkins is, is additional funding for us to run our programs. Your local money runs the programs, but then if we have to buy equipment, that sort of thing, that's really expensive, and it's a burden on the district, so they provide us federal money for that. Okay? Purpose of the plan, as I said, is to make sure that we are going, are abiding by regulations and compliance, that we basically have our pathways, that we are trying to increase the number of students in our pathways, that we are increasing our equipment, increasing the number of pathways we offer, those sort of things. We need to strengthen our academic and technical skills of our students in addition to our programs. The skills of learning needs to be industry-certified. We need to expand our use of technology and to develop our instructors. Mandated activities continued, just that we also have our special ed population, we need to make sure that we are making accommodations for them, and we're providing the training that they will need for jobs in the future. Okay, our one-year funding, Perkins Plus, we received $9,640. Our Perkins program improvement, $38,520. And then our professional development, they actually don't tell us that amount, there's just a certain percentage that's taken out of everyone's, and that goes to the local consortium for teacher training and that sort of thing. Kind of a breakdown, what Perkins Plus is, that is money that we spend on our end-of-pathway assessments. We are required, after a student completes three classes in a pathway, they have to take a pathway assessment. We have to pay for those, so to help local communities like ours pay for that, we get the money. Program improvement, that is where we buy equipment. That money has to be spent on either travel, professional development, or equipment. The state consortium, again, that just goes into a large fund and that goes to like the local RISA, that sort of thing. Our state grants, our agricultural extended year grant, that's $15,976, that's fully funded. Our extended day, $18,971, again, that's fully funded. The apprenticeship grant, $18,319. Extended day, $16,000, that's funded at 50 percent, and I'll explain what those are in just a second. And then the supervision grant is $14,140. Our extended day, fully funded means we submit our application each year and we say this is how much money we need to fund our agriculture, those extended day and extended year. The state fully funds those, whatever we ask for, we usually get. And basically what that is, is every day, extended day, they get paid for an extra hour, you know, they have to take care of the farm equipment, the pigs, FFA, all of those extra things that they do, and then they also work an additional forty days. The apprenticeship grant, that pays for our youth apprenticeship coordinator, it doesn't totally pay for her, obviously, but it helps offset that cost. Extended day grant, that is funded at 50 percent, that changes every year. Basically, we make an application of how much money we need, they pool all that together to figure out how much is, is the need and how much money they actually have, and then they tell us what percentage of that they have the money for. This year, it was 50 percent, so we actually pay the other 50 percent. Supervision grant, I appreciate that, that pays, helps pay my salary. And then our QBE, based on FTE from 1819, we earned $70,235. We use that to run our programs. That is our purchasing supplies and for our culinary arts, food, that sort of thing. These are our pathways that all that money pays for, most of you are familiar with those. We have twelve instructors, we have ten clusters, fifteen pathways, and offer thirty classes as of this fall, and the numbers, the last I checked, we have 988 students that are in CTAE classes. And if you recall the previous report, we only have about a little less than 1,400 students in Pickens High School. That means two-thirds of those students are in CTAE programs. We have 26 students in work-based learning, and last year, we had 304 of those students who completed a pathway, which means they completed three classes. Of those pathway completers, 210 of them passed the industry-recognized test. So we have industry-certified workforce. In the future, we plan to pursue industry certification in all of our programs. Currently, none of them are industry-certified, they have been in the past, but we're working on getting those certified again. Move on when ready, working closely with Mr. Bell, that he's helping our students with that connection between school and the technical college. And then Career Day, that involves local businesses and industry partners. And then if you need more information, there are some links for there, or you can give me a call. That's about as quick as I could go through there. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. We do have one of the best CTAE programs that I've familiar with, and I want to commend you and Mr. Wallace, but particularly our CTAE teachers. I mean, we have state and nationally-recognized CTAE teachers, and we have a very, very impressive program, and we get to be witness to that because we regularly have CTAE students coming to celebrate their accomplishments with us. Great job, thank you.
Action item number three, approval of the CTAE budget, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the CTAE budget.
Motion by Ms. Finley, do her a second.
A second.
Second by Ms. Youngblood, any further discussions? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item four, we have multiple field trips to approve. I think we have one out-of-state field trip for boys cross-country and a few in-state but overnight field trips. Dr. Wilson, you want?
With you, Mr. Chairman. Our out-of-state trip for our boys cross-country, per September 5th through the 8th, to, let's see where I had, Kentucky? Kentucky, yeah, University of Kentucky. That's our out-of-state. Then we also have three other in-state that are overnight. We have a Beta Club Leadership Summit, October 28th and 29th in La Grange, the annual eighth grade Savannah trip, April 1st through the 3rd, and the seventh grade Jekyll trip, April 13th to the 15th. And does anyone have any questions about any of those four field trips? I would recommend a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion to approve all four of these field trips?
I make the motion to approve all four field trips.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do her a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item five, employee computer and internet use policy. This policy we tentatively approved last month to place out for public review. Dr. Wilson, was there any public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman, there were not.
Any questions from anybody on this policy or any consumption? Do I hear a motion to approve the employee computer and internet use policy?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood, do her a second.
So.
Second by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item six, approval of...
Mr. Chairman, I got a deal for you on this one.
We'd like to hear that.
We'd like to hear that. It's the purchase of a special needs bus. Total price is a hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars, with the seventy-seven thousand not be coming from bond money from the state. Local money would be thirty-four thousand for this school bus, out-of-Splat bus to cover the cost of the bus. And I would request a motion to approve the purchase of the special needs bus. Thank you for that. Do you hear a motion to approve the purchase of special needs bus?
Make a motion to approve this special needs bus.
Motion by Miss Ennis, right here, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item seven, approval of purchase lighting for safe softball-baseball complex at Pickens High School. Dr. Wilson? Mr. Chairman, by us going through Splat and purchasing it this way, we save on middleman costs, also sales tax, and let's see, those numbers. It was substantial savings in sales tax and everything if we purchased it this way is to go in through the contract. And I recommend that we approve the purchase of the lighting for the softball-baseball complex at the high school due to the amount of money that we saved by doing it, purchasing This will be the infield and the outfield lighting? Total cost, two-twenty-one, out-of-Splat running. Great.
Yes.
Hear a motion to approve purchase lighting for softball-baseball complex at Pickens High School?
I make a motion to approve the lighting purchase.
Motion by Miss Ennis, right here, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item eight, approval of minutes. This is for minutes for our called board meeting in July, any regular board meeting in July, vote on July eleventh. I believe everybody's had a chance to look over the minutes. Do you hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, right here, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Miss Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. And action item nine, approval of guaranteed maximum pricing for Phase Two construction of Pickens Junior High School. Dr. Wilson? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just got through with the bid opening this afternoon. It actually came in at five million six... Oh, this is gonna be the hell of a bid. Five million, six-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, guaranteed maximum. It came in about a hundred thousand dollars to what we projected. This does have our allowances, our contingencies in it. We still, we're gonna come in lower than this. Actually, even in this process here, we had a couple of bidders that were vetting out, and I really believe that even the guaranteed maximum, as soon as they get through vetting it out, will come in about a hundred thousand dollars cheaper than what it is right now. Just to let you know, we've, we're still getting about eight-hundred thousand for the entire project from the State Department, and all of about a million dollars of this is designated funds before we even hit Splat, so really, it's gonna be about a million dollars out of our Splat account for the total project. And I know, I believe Stacy commented that we don't have the total numbers yet, but Dover and Phase One, PJ, both came in under the guaranteed maximum pricing.
Phase One is really close because of the hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-dollar trash pit we found. So that eat up some of our allowance and contingencies. Dover's well in line, it's under considerable.
This will be, as a reminder for public knowledge, the additional camp roadside at Pickens Junior High School, which will be the new face of that school office space with auditorium, three-hundred-and-fifty-seat auditorium, band course classrooms. There'll also be expansion in the cafeteria, and we're gonna do also...
This doesn't include the cafeteria. That's with the ag barn and all, what we do in.
And, but we are looking at it.
But that's next summer, too.
Yeah. The total again was? Five million, six-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Any questions? Do you hear a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum pricing for Phase Two of Pickens Junior High School?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, right here, a second.
Second.
Second by Miss Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? I have none opposed.
Dr. Wilson, we had four to six bidders on every item, so we had a good turnout for bids.
That's correct, Dr. Wilson. Section seven, board comments. Any comments from the board?
I would like to commend Stacy for the job that's been done this summer. It is beyond belief what y'all have been able to accomplish. And I know there's a lot of people other than you that have caused this, but the leadership has come from right there.
I appreciate it. We got a good crew, we got a good contractor, and we work well together. You can't do it if you don't... The board was, part of the board was on the committee to select this company and everything, and you know, it just, it flows and works, and I give a lot of people credit. It's not me, I'm just having to be involved in it.
It's not just you.
I want to say a great job to our staffs for getting school back-started. I know for me, complaints were as minimal as could be expected. That's excluding Facebook, because I don't get on there. But for the postpart, y'all did a great, or from our view, you did a great job. I think everything was going well. I had the opportunity to go out to Harmony with Miss Callahan and help welcome some kids back. And I know a couple of us made it out to Hill City for their new ag program, which a lot of people are very excited about, one of only twenty schools in the state of Georgia. We're very excited and proud of Hill City and Sony Chapman and David Chapman, a lot of folks did a lot of work for them. But all of our schools got a lot of great things going on, gonna be a great year, I hope. And so, great job, keep up the work. Any other comments? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, right here, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Miss Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. We are adjourned at six forty-one.